I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of this country, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a roll call, please?
Come, Dick Jr.
Here.
Lisa Petrowski.
Here.
Dominic Rivera, here. James Grola.
Here.
DeMarso, here. Phil Corron, here. George Shaw, here. Mayor Steen, here.
All right, thank you. An executive session was held this evening at 5:30 to discuss legal matters. Can I have a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from June 9, 2025?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizens comment? I have, uh... McMillan?
Correct.
For, uh... Item is disturbing the peace?
Correct.
Okay.
May I?
Yes?
There's a mic there.
The mic may not work, but, uh... Speak loud.
Yeah, I will. First of all, I have a complaint about my neighbors. And, uh... The first thing I'd like to find out is what's best need to be taken to file a legitimate claim against the neighbors for excessive noise, noise and disturbing the peace.
Do you call the police when it happens?
Yes, several times. The police officers have been there, uh... Twice now since the people moved in, I believe it was sometime April, March, February. And, uh... You know, I guess they give them a stern warning or what have you, but, uh... Nothing seemed to take an effect.
Chief, you want to answer on this? Do you have any, uh...
Yes, yes. And they should have cited it, okay? Like you said, there should be citations issued.
Well, Mr. Ferrelli, Chief Ferrelli, if you may, uh... I called and, and, and... And he just told me that the phone number that I called on Friday and Saturday to complain about the noise, it was excessive too over the weekend. And I had no response from him. It was your voice on the voicemail. Please leave a message and we'll get back to you.
Okay.
I understand now that I have to call the Muroville Police.
Yes.
Do you have any... Well, I didn't know that, so I apologize for that fact.
Okay.
Uh... Number two, uh... You know, we've been there 35 years, my wife and I. Taxpaying people who worked all our lives, still working today, every day. And, uh... It just doesn't seem right. Nothing can be done about it. I have suspicions that there's... If not illegal activity, certainly immoral and, uh... Just horrible activity going on there. They have a couple of small children. The people never come out of their house. And if you don't believe me, you can. It's my neighbors.
Dan did they buy the house or they...
Yeah, apparently. My wife says they, they, uh... Own it. I don't know how because they don't seem to have any income. They never leave the house. I don't know how they...
Well, certainly...
They work from home.
Yes, certainly the first...
But I think their work from home is some sort of religious voodoo podcast kind of...
Unfortunately, that's not illegal.
Yes.
Uh... It is if it disturbs the neighbors. We share a common wall, even at Tavon or Rojas or everyone.
Yes.
So, it, it, it is against the law to disturb the peace and, and...
Certainly, the first thing to do, I would advise you, is to call the...
Who's talking to you first?
Me, right here. The Council President. To certainly report to that number, the Muroville Dispatch number, because they will send an officer every time you call. So, that's the first step. After that step is completed, there are ordinances within the boroughs, uh... Ordinances that can, we can file certain, you know, disorderly houses and stuff like that, as Chief would know, uh... By those calls. So, the track record, obviously, is one thing. And then, obviously, you know, going by the ordinances would be the second thing. So, there are things in place here to, uh... Prevent these things from continuing on, I should say. All right?
Uh... Yeah, um... Again, if I do call them in a little sensation and...
Yeah.
I'm not feared for our safety by any means.
No.
I'm feared for the conflict that may transpire.
Yeah, and it's...
I'm gonna lose it, man. This has been months and months and months.
And that number is not just an emergency number. It is for police in general. If it's a non-emergency police call, if it's just you want to make a report, anything. That number is for all those incidents. So, you, they won't think that you're calling, you know, because you think you're in danger and... They'll, they'll come and take a report if need be, or they'll tell them to keep it down if that's what, you know, if that's what the police think that needs to be done, so...
Chief, question. If he calls the 111 number and asks Dispatch to have an officer on duty to call him so he wouldn't have to come out of his house to file a report, is that sufficient?
Yep, wait a minute. Yes, that is sufficient. I was on the one call. I remember because I was the one that went next door and it was some type of religion. Yeah, it was, it was, it was odd. It was odd, but that night, remember, I went next door?
Yep.
That was documented. Uh... And like you said, there is a three-strike rule. It's actually, if you look it up, you can go at home and look at it. It's called 10704, the ordinance, disorderly house. Three calls within a 90-day period. Uh... Three, like, calls as such, not where, like, people confuse the victim and the suspect in a domestic situation, three calls, that's, that's a negative. That's because someone's going to be the victim, someone's going to be the suspect, and you can't punish the victim if she resides or he resides in that dress. But them three calls in 90 days. Uh... Yeah, you, you could call the 856-1111 and the officer could call you back. You could say, "Hey, could I just get the officer to give me a call?" Because I remember when I came out, she turned it down.
Yeah.
And then, I think she turned it back up when I left.
It's every single night.
Yeah, I do remember that.
And it's at 1:30 in the morning, it's at 3:30 in the morning. There's thumping, there's pounding. I can't watch my television. I can't work at, when I'm doing work. It's insane.
I would just, I would call every time.
Every time.
That's where my frustration lies.
Yeah.
The chief, uh...
Yeah, I understand.
I called Friday and Saturday and I got no response, so that, that's why I'm here.
That phone is in a police station. And I talked about a lot of people call and think they've left a message. They've left a message, but it's not getting answered. But the police on the other end do need a landline to call out. I suggested at one point to take it out because it is very misleading. I had a recent call for the same reason.
Right, if it's after any kind of...
Once you call, the other thing is, once you call Muroville Dispatch, the 856, there's a record of it. And you call the 9505.
No. But like, what happens, I mean, we could be calling every single night.
I mean, there, we, there are people that do that because it's on, it's on record that you're having that issue. And the police are, the police will respond every time that you call that number because that is our number for the police department, even if there's a violent domestic or anything else going on, so...
Now, what if they retaliate though somehow? Like, that's a word for it, like, something hap, you know what I mean, like...
Well, I think that would fall into your hands, Chief. Retaliation against...
You know what I mean, like, who knows?
There's nothing more retaliating. It, it, she, she takes care of it, she comes home sometimes at midnight. You know, pulls you out of the alley in the garage. It's concerning.
Yeah. Dan, is your ultimate goal is to nip this in the bud and out before it gets any worse?
Yeah.
I don't hate the people. Their daughter's wonderful. That's certainly one of the guys that comes outside. We talk on the porch.
Try to be not, yeah. But it's...
Anyway, thank you, Charlie.
We'll try, we'll try that as well and then we'll work with the chief on making sure that that gets handled the right way through Dispatch and everything.
If you want me to, before it gets any further, tomorrow I work. I'll just knock on the door. I don't need a complaint. And tell her, obviously, I've been patrolling, I hear it, which I did. And I'll address it.
Okay.
And I'll tell her, this is your one warning, one warning to know next time you're cited.
Right, thanks.
Yeah, I'll do that tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
It's so annoying.
All right, next up, George Parkhart. No items discussed.
That's because I'm going to ask you about a couple things.
Oh, okay.
First thing is about, have you just figured out a place for the lines to put their stuff for their feet, food?
As far as like the storage, what you were talking about?
Yeah.
I think the, the best place, if you don't mind being that far, is the, uh... The room in the back of the concession stand.
I don't think it matters where it's at to us. We just want to know if we've got a place. And if so, how do we get into it, should I say?
Give me, give me a day or two because I'm not sure what the public works guys are doing. I just got to make sure what's in there, if anything else needs to be removed from the football team. They took everything out of it, but I just haven't been in there to see if it's...
Yeah. But you understand, I, I, yeah, I just want to know. And the other thing, probably the, our engineer, is there anything going on with the, uh... I don't know what you want to call it, the, uh... Where they put the new drain in on Wall Avenue? That thing's down probably about, uh...
We measured it. They measured it. I thought it was...
I don't know how many inches, maybe even a foot.
They're waiting for it to sink, George. They, we brought it to... Settle, settle, settle.
You know, when you got...
So, there, there is correspondence with the contractor. The contractor has acknowledged that he needs to do something with it. And so, we had a couple site meetings with them and what we decided, whether he was going to monitor it for a couple of months to make sure that it's... He, he knows exactly what he wants to do. Timing-wise, I'm hoping for something soon, but probably within the next month.
So, everybody drives out there, bounces all over the place.
No, he stayed to the fore, right, because I, I wanted to their attention.
Well, I, I know what you're saying. You, I know that, but I'm saying Joe Smo go out there. He starts bumping on them bumps and don't know where that car's going to end up at. You know, it couldn't, it could wreck into another car because that person could lose control maybe. You know, and if that happens, then I don't know where the paper's going to lie, should I say? You know, and plus, the damage on people's cars going out there. You know? I mean, I understand that you have to, you don't, to me, you don't have to wait. You have to do it in something. But in the same token, if you're waiting, something should be done to let people know that that road, or that center of that road is that bad.
There's some good scrapes on it.
Oh, yeah.
Well, my car's not blind. I mean, well, I don't mean outlandish yet, so...
Yeah.
And I got a lowrider, but I'm slow and I'm careful.
Because you know they're there.
Well, and also I say it's a speed, it's a speed bump right now. It controls the speed.
Well, we may have some signs that says, uh, that we can put up that say bump or something like that.
Yeah.
Put it to corners. And just temporarily until they fix what they need to fix.
They're waiting for the rest of the ground to settle. Instead of trying to do something and then have to redo it and redo it, like the water company, before you even get to the bend in the road.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else, George?
Yeah, the signs on telephone poles that, uh... Through election, been up since then. Or we don't do something about them or we just don't leave everything? Because there's an ordinance about signs on telephone poles. Have we...
His name is Brian. I tried to contact him on Facebook, but no one got back.
Public Works is, is pulling off in the past, again, with all this rain we've been having in the, in the...
Oh, no, it shouldn't be their responsibility. They should have never been hit by the first...
I mean, in Jeanette, the state, state police is taking that, what is it? Ed Doyle or whatever, to give them some citations because they're up. You know? The guy that was running for mayor or something like that in Jeanette. I mean, we have signs posted all over, not just election signs because, you know, I don't believe that the man that lives in a glass house should throw rocks. But if we're going with one, we should go with all of them because there's an ordinance against it.
I haven't seen any political signs still up, but...
Yeah, we're, we're there.
Right here.
Right there.
There's one right here at the bottom.
There's one right there.
Okay.
I mean, you know...
Yeah, right there.
But, yeah.
All right. All right, thank you. I have nobody else on here, so we will move on to Mayor Margaret Steen.
Okay, the pit care and police collecting $200 in parking tickets are, are mayor's signs. Uh... We got $487 from the state. Uh... Warden got $49.95 from their magistrate. And we got $637. Uh... We got $30.26 from the county and $25 from Quality of Life. The pit care and police were 251 calls in the length of two. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Personnel, Dominic?
I would like to make a motion to pass ordinance 1058, raising council members' monthly payments from $50 to $75.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to raise the council members' monthly pay from $50 to $75, seconded by George. Any questions?
We do have a question. Did we make that motion in time for that to get raised after the next election? Can we know the answer to that?
Yeah, so, um, it depends on, essentially, what the law says is you... The simplest way to break it down is you can't make the motion, um, and then give the raise within the same um, not to wait until the next term and reelection happens for that to be effective. So, it, it, it depends on when terms are over perceived for council.
Okay. Because I was originally told that it had to be done before the primary election. So, we tried to do it before the primary election, but apparently it takes longer to change the ordinance.
Well, we s, we started, we did the motion.
We started the process.
Did the motion to advertise. It had to be advertised for 30 days, which is, we're at the end of that, and that's why we...
I was just making sure that between the primary and the general, as long as we did it, or that...
Yeah, it just, yeah, it just depends on when Percy...
Okay.
...would it.
All right, that's perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, motion passed.
I would also like to make a motion to approve the property disposition of 419 Robinson Street, pit care and by the tri-pod, land bank.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the property disposition of 419 Robinson. Any questions?
Now, what does that entail?
They're, whether they, they're either sell it to somebody of, an owner, occupant. They have to sell it to them, or they have to sell it to a contractor that promises to sell it, that they do any work and then sell it to another occupant.
Thank you.
Should they have to live there five years, Mike? I don't know what their, their land bank requirement is. I think it's two, at least two to three.
All right, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all the business I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Streets, George?
Oh, thank you. Uh... Motion to adopt Resolution 6, 2025, approving, uh, multimodal transportation grant application for Hillside Avenue's slide repairs in the amount of $351,000. Total project cost is estimated to be $406,000.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Any questions?
Is, is there funding for this?
This, this is...
It's a grant.
They're saying a grant.
Yeah, it's for application to grant. I just wanted to say that, uh, I reached out to Markozic's office and Nick Viscuttano's office. They're both going to be sending us letters of support for it. Um, Nick's representative wants to come out and do a look at it, just so he has an idea of how bad it got. So, I, I'm probably going to get with him and maybe you, Mike, and maybe if Dawn's available or something, we could go over there and just look at it. So, I'm going to call him tomorrow and I'll let you guys know. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Motion to request a waiver from the matching funds requirement from the above grant.
I do have a question.
Motion made?
Second.
And a second? Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um... I guess it'd be Dawn. The... My question is, if we do this waiver, does that mean then the total amount will be $351,000? Or how do we come up with that grand total of $406,000?
Yeah, so, this, uh, particular funding program, this multimodal transportation grant, what we've seen in the past is a 30% match, okay? Required, but they waived it before. So, that's what your second motion is. So, so we've asked for a promotion. And the, the reason why the amounts don't line up is because, you know, again, with this particular funding, uh, the multimodal, you're limited to 10% of engineering, administrative, legal fees. And, and projects like this, especially with the road slot, is going to be much greater than 10%. A big portion of this project is going to be geotechnical engineering. So, the geotechnical engineer is going to have to come in and, and, uh, drill boreings. Uh, he's going to have to come up with a design and we're going to work with him, just like we did on Center and Hillside before. But his, the geotechnical costs will be far exceed 10% of the budget.
Now, that, that'll also apply for the next waiver to the same thing. Thank you.
All ready? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adopt Resolution 7, 2025, approving multimodal transportation grant application for traffic claiming devices along Broadway Boulevard in the amount of $514,800. Total project cost is estimated to be $560,800.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Also, the support letters would be for the, that grant as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to request a waiver from the matching funds requirements from the above grant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all my business, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Parks and Recreation, Lisa.
Thank you. Um, just real quick, back on what George was saying, um... With the, the letters of support. I also sent one to Federman's office and Summer Lee's office, but they want to know what the deadline is for for the grants.
Um, I can give it to you.
Okay. She, she told me she would get to it on Tuesday and I told her that was probably plenty of time. I just wanted to make sure this wasn't something we had to have like by Friday.
There's, there's time.
Okay, we'll have the letter. All right, good, good. Thank you.
I just don't know what to exactly...
That's fine. Thank you. Um... Discussion of the field condition and, right, refund fees. Uh, I think everybody was kind of made aware of the puddle that was on the baseball field, softball field, whatever you call it back here. Um, it left the dirty dogs unable to play on it for quite some time. Um... They were pretty upset. They, they spoke to me. They also spoke to Mike. Um, they asked for more dirt to be put on the field. Our guys put more dirt on the field, but it had rocks in it, so then they were mad about that too. Um... I think we got it all worked out. The guys ended up spending quite some time last week on it, getting it fixed up.
They, they worked on it Monday, but...
Yeah, and then it rained again the same day.
They had it, they had it about near perfect and then we got, we got rained and, and I don't...
Did you hear back from them since then? Because I think they went out of town for a game, I believe.
Yeah, I, I mean, there's a puddle on it now from all the rain. And we, we got an inch of rain in 45 minutes.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what the, I don't know what to do and I don't know what to expect when you have record rainfall in months. You know, we had almost nine inches of rain in the month of June. Um, seven inches in the month of May, which is twice our normal rainfall. And we had all the flooding that the guys were dealing up to. We don't have anybody that can actually go over there on the field and work. And another problem I have is that I, I don't think, I don't know of anybody on that roster that actually lives in it.
So, I understand that. However, they paid to use our field and they paid to get a usable field. So, that's why I'm still going to, still going to suggest...
It's a true refund of their money.
I, I play softball, okay? We play 16 games.
Yes.
Okay, we've had three games so far this year. Okay?
Well, they've been paying Lynn and Tyne Hill.
And we go repair the fields ourselves.
Yes.
But there's no refund whatsoever for the front money we pay for the fields. We can just rent out every game. And they have no control over that. We've got no control over that.
And I remember way back whenever, myself, Dawn is, Lynn, my dad, we would actually take the dirt over and we, that field has always been a problem there. That's why they originally, some 20, 25 years ago, they did try to fix it with that drain. But it does not do it. We had to do it. We didn't expect the borough to do it. The people that ran the organization did it and, and...
Didn't you care for the field then? And I'm not trying to smart, I'm just...
I don't remember.
Yeah, but the dollar amount they're paying, $250, I mean, that, that barely covers the gas they use to cut the...
Takes work every day. And I worked on that in the field 15 years. It took me enjoy on five years to get no puddles on that big field. And I was working on it every day for five years. It takes work. Not just once in a while. And the borough don't have time to put that kind of work in it.
George, I... Remember when baseball re-crowned that whole field?
Yes.
I mean, it, it, I mean... But what you said, it, it takes...
Yeah.
It takes work. As far as, uh... The Dirty Dogs are sponsored by the Pit Care and Italian Club, okay, which, uh...
And that, too, wanted to come ask for their money back, honestly. I was told the Italian Club was going to come down here and ask for their money back.
Well, I...
And they didn't, but...
They... They bring, they do a lot for the community, the Italian Club. They, uh... Not only that, they're bringing people into town, which, and I don't know if they're patronizing the Italian Club or not. And I mean, I can ask them, but, uh... The, the, the way I view it is, if you're bringing people in, into this town, you know, hopefully they're spending money in this town, something.
Maybe we could do a pro-rated scenario and figure out a partial, because I'm thinking they're still planning on...
My suggestion is, we table this. If they come ask for a refund, we cross up their bridge whenever we get there. Because no one showed up tonight to ask for it and they have not contacted you to ask for one either, I'm guessing, so...
Okay.
I can agree with that.
All right, good.
Okay.
Okay. My next, next item, um...
You going to table it?
Yes. Do I need to make a motion to table it? I don't need to do that, right? It wasn't actually...
It wasn't the first step.
Yeah, okay.
It wasn't the first item, anyway.
Yeah, okay. Um... This Sunday, the 20th, we're having a basketball tournament at the basketball courts. Starting at 10:00 AM is signups. The ages listed, and I'm saying listed for a reason, um, are 12 to 18. We, we really wanted to try to target the teens to get them out, get them doing something. I have a feeling the ages are going to be more like 12 to 27, but if that's who shows up to play, I'm gonna let them play. I mean, I'm not gonna turn them away. But they'll also, the older ones will help referee the young ones. I mean, it worked great. We did it three years ago. Great time. They were there for probably six hours. Fantastic time. So, we're gonna feed them some hot dogs and chips and make sure they're hydrated, keep water down there. There will be a prize for first place. I think we're gonna try to do twenty-five dollar gift certificates for the three. So it's gonna be three-on-three, single-elimination rounds. So there'll be free twenty-five dollar gift certificates for the winning team. I also have some other small things for giveaways and whatnot, so that hopefully I don't have any teams sign up. They sign up the day of, because I don't want to sign up people ahead of time and them not show up, so. That's the plan for right now. I have some help, so hopefully we're good. But if anybody else on council would like to show up and help, we welcome you as well. Or anybody in general wants to show up and help. But that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Finance and Economic Development, Bill.
Motion to pay bills, as presented, second.
Motion to pay the bills made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, moving on. Health and Welfare, Deb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Turner has submitted the reports to counsel, and I just want to say between Codel enforcement and the chief, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but they have really worked their butts off the past month, and it's showed by the magistrate winnings. So I'm gonna thank the two of you.
I have a question. So that fine list that was sent to us, like, sometimes we're like sixty-five cents. That's what we get paid.
That's, yeah.
That's so horrible. So we find them twenty-five dollars and we get sixty-five cents.
Yeah, they get to put on a monthly pay.
Oh, that's their budget.
So, like, it's like twenty-five dollars a month that they have to pay, and that's the picket portion of that monthly payment.
Wow, sixty-five cents is like what we end up with. Working for pennies, isn't it?
Traffic, traffic ticket, you get one dollar, fifty cents.
That's crazy. I never do.
We got some landlords that pay some fines for lack of occupancy. There were several, there were several traffic citations under as well, and it's you're not doing it to make the money, you're doing it to
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
It's good to see the numbers.
Thank you, Deb. Electric, myself. I'm gonna make a motion to purchase ten thirty-seven KVA transformers and two fifty KVA transformers using a combination of general and capital improvement funds. Total cost is thirty-three thousand seven hundred thirty dollars.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions?
Keep the last one.
Yeah.
These are just for the, replace the backlog of them, right?
We had, we had two, two go when we had those real hot days in June. We had one on Lomorego, and the one on Tenth Street that went, it was a thirty-seven KVA, and you replaced it with a fifty because of the number of puddles that are on it. So we've been to try and separate some of them. The real estate owner bought eight, nine houses per transformer, and some of our transformers have twelve to fifteen. And that was fine probably years ago before everybody had all the air conditioning and stuff like that, so we're separating some of them and putting more up, which will be less tax on the system.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's all I have. Public Safety, Jim.
Thank you. Motion to approve the reimbursement request to Pit Care and Fire Company for various vehicle repairs. Payment will come from the public safety fund.
Can we get a dollar amount?
Yeah. Yeah, when they first called me on it, they did, and they gave me the invoices today. So, the garage door repair was sixteen oh five. And the vehicle repairs, six hundred and sixty-five in parts and five hundred and nineteen in labor. Roughly three thousand dollars.
Second though.
Motion made and seconded. Can I get a roll call, please? Any questions before we do a roll call?
Please, you said it.
Yes.
Tom Dick Jr.?
Abstain.
George Scott?
Yes.
Dominic Verbera?
Yes.
Devin Marto?
Yes.
Jim Roller?
Yes.
Phil Parnell?
Yes.
Lisa Trossman?
Yes.
George? George is abstaining.
Right, technically I don't know. We asked him at a conference, and he says a summer life member that ruled on the court. But if we made people happy, I'll abstain.
I don't abstain, I abstain. Yeah, abstain, stay, other, you got it anyway, so it doesn't matter. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, there's enough votes, so see your abstain.
Yeah.
Sorry, George. Not trying to make it hard, just wanna make it right.
Five yeses and two abstentions.
Motion passed.
I'd like to have a discussion on the license plate readers to put in town. The chief has requested two of them.
Two? I'll send it. It's a bundle package.
Another discussion.
Well, it still says motion.
So we could talk about it more.
No.
You wanna tell us what this, what the
Yeah, I thought you were sitting in the corner. I think you're in the corner. So it's a six LPR bundle, that's what it is. So normally these things are selling for four or five thousand dollars apiece, but Monk, who is out of Monroeville, has a friend, retired state trooper, who is now selling these LPRs out for plate smart, which is a connection to everybody in the county. These things could have been used for, as Mark knows, could have been used for many things, put it that way. There's a lot of crime and things that occur that we don't even know the cars are coming through town. These LPRs, they would hit the plate and let us advise us, hey, you got that car in your area. Hey, there's a stolen vehicle. Hey,
It's like my pursuit that just happened at Burger King, by the way that guy got some
License plate reader could have picked up Christie's car when that happened to her, because it was, they looked at the cameras, and it did come through here.
It's always the phone.
And yes, because they had to go through the footage, through the footage. These LPRs will read the plate, because they plug it in, and it picks it up, and it alerts them where that car is immediately, or then it'll alert the dispatch, and it puts it out. We could have used it, you guys know, I listened to the scanner. You don't know how many times, and even Monroeville has said to them, we could have used, if you had an LPR, we could have used you at that point. It picks it up coming through. We are a major orderway. We were a railroad town. All these other towns built up around us, especially Monroeville, we are encompassed by them. Another license plate reader isn't until Donovan James Street in Turfburg?
Yeah, Monroeville Avenue.
Monroeville Avenue. And in between that time and forty-eight
There's a work over here tomorrow.
Oh, that's right. Today was, yeah.
Eight-week campus.
So regardless, they really can be used. I can't tell you how many chases come through that in between they lose them, because they can jump off at Warner D, whenever. At least they would know faster that that car did not come through a broadway. That's it.
Well, thank you, she explained it.
Very good, thank you.
She explained it.
What is your six pack?
Do you have any idea where you plan on placing this?
Not yet. I mean, I'm doing some studies. I know that I'd like to cover our entrance and exits of town, because we like to know who's coming in and out of our town. Believe it or not, they even connect license plates to federal probation, federal violators that you may have come to your town. And believe me, you have a lot more to travel on that road than what you ever had to.
What's the quote on that, Jim? For all six of them?
Sixty-six hundred fifty.
Sixty-six hundred fifty dollars.
But that doesn't include installation.
The installation will be our responsibility.
And what was the estimate for that?
That seems like super cheap.
No, for the installation.
Because it's a package.
No, they go, any place, they go, any intersection or anywhere like our cameras. Anywhere you have electricity
Be connected to a fire.
Yeah, to the fiber or to whatever electric, any electric, don't want it to be fiber. We use
Actually, I mean, how does it transmit to the dispatch that this
Satellite.
Satellite, yeah.
It does, it's different.
Anywhere there's electricity, they said you can use it.
It probably goes cellular.
That would be sloppy.
Probably just having a
Yeah, plate smart. We will put lots in east and westbound on Broadway. We will connect them to the compass off Tilburg and Rosecrest. So we will make sure we cover the entrance and exits for us.
So I can't get away with anything now?
No.
So, yeah, it would be terrible. Actually, he said something like that.
Jim, can you put them in?
Well, I haven't asked or talked to Jim about it, so that's just a consideration that we have to do. I'm sure Jim would be more than capable of doing it.
Yeah.
I just, I don't want to keep piling on Jim when he's semi-retired.
Because he doesn't appreciate it. I have talked to him.
Right.
I don't know, Jim's pretty good at this. He really is. He likes
I think, but he gets
Please for yourself.
This rain and the flooding and stuff has set him back with the things he wanted to get done.
Right.
He asked them to install a transformer up at the water tower for the water company, which the water company's paying for. Because their pumps, whatever their engineers, calculations, the engineers did, they didn't factor in enough electricity, so what Jim was told to put in, or what Jim was originally told was that our system could handle it, the transformer could certainly handle it. But it's not enough, so he has to put in a transformer. The water company's paying for it, their engineers can't help.
Oh, good. That doesn't give them more time, but this is still nice.
Yeah, and we don't have, I don't know what the shipping timeframe is, or
When would your guy need an answer about, for the order?
That's a quote, as you noticed. I think it's a thirty-day quote.
Yeah.
And it's huge discount.
Yeah, that's
I don't think it's a good idea to wait on that. I think we should
I don't want to wait on it. I just would like to give Jim a heads up.
Well, once we get him
Oh, yeah, once they're here.
Once we get him, we don't have to do it. We don't have to put him in right away. We can wait on it.
It'll probably go bad.
If it's gonna take Jim thirty days to put him in, we'll wait thirty days, but we're not gonna wait thirty days to put this quote in.
Right.
Do you have a motion for that, Jim?
Yes, I do. I'd like to make a motion to purchase the license plate readers using public safety funds of six thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any more questions on the LPRs? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And last but not least, a motion to purchase a drone. We've talked about that before, for the Pit Care and Police Department. Total cost of the drone is fourteen thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. It's to come from the police budget, along with two thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents from public safety.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions?
Yeah, that was a tight one on my part. It was twelve hundred and sixty-eight from public safety.
Of twelve hundred.
So we're saving, huh?
Saving a thousand bucks.
I know it's good as far as public safety. There's enough money in there for everything. Don't worry about it.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Solicitor's report.
Solicitor's office has no public report.
Engineers' report.
Yes, thanks. Please, just answer your question from the board. The applications are due July.
July. Thank you.
I want to say that we couldn't supplement later with a support letter, but it'd probably be easier if we get the support letter.
When are you gonna start working on?
We don't have that bid out yet, so we still can go back. We can certainly start looking into bidding it out, though. So what I do have going on is the two thousand twenty-five paving program. We've issued that notice to proceed. The Brighton Avenue roadway construction, we've issued that notice to proceed. The Highland Avenue sanitary sewer, it's out to bid. Bid to do August fifth. We already have six contractors that have picked it up, so that's a good start. So at next month's meeting in August, we'll probably be asking to award that for the sanitary sewers for Highland. And following up on that will be department line, you know, July. Then obviously with a lot of grants soon, up at the, here back, there's some grants. Any questions, anything?
Did he happen to even indicate any timeframe, how long he is gonna leave Wall Avenue to re-measure?
We can follow up again. We didn't come up with any sort of timeframe for the contract. However, in our initial meeting, we were very cooperative and said, you can drive, so we took that as a positive. So I think it's just something where we're just gonna have to, you know, come up with a schedule once we figure out what we want to do.
Like, hey, end of July is up, we want an answer to this.
Yeah, it's been a couple months.
They've done at least one measurement, and they should be coming out soon to do a second.
Okay. It's just that I know where to drive, doesn't mean I like it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else for the engineer? Anything else from you, Don?
No.
All right, thank you. Borough manager's report.
Our real estate tax collected in June was two hundred and seventy-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars, seventy-six cents. Those are all twenty-twenty-five taxes collected. Taxes to gate is three hundred and sixty-one, not seven ninety-five. The capital improvement account has three hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and three hundred, eighty thousand, of which is dedicated to Jewel Way. The electric system capital improvement fund has one hundred and fifty-five thousand. Liquid fuels has forty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine. Our local TRC B has seven hundred and eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. The local dirty camp bond fund has seventy-two thousand nine hundred and nine. Sewer capital improvement has nine hundred and seven thousand four seventy-six. Public safety has a hundred and four thousand nine thirty-six. The bond repayment fund has three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine, and the park direct is twelve thousand three hundred and forty-two thousand. I got a request from Monroeville today for just a support letter, they're going after a grant for some upgrades on their amphitheater. I thought I would submit that, but it has an objection to it. I know there's people from Pit Care that go up there and enjoy their park, so We do have our bond payment coming due, it's due August first, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-seven, we'll be transferring that, making that payment this week. That's about it. The only other thing was if the ball filled with our grants that we have to upgrade that, that would be the only thing, if maybe we can take something out and add some improvements to the field, if that's a possibility.
Yeah, maybe drainage or some sort of temporary covering that, when it, you know, when it's not being used, maybe it can be covered.
Well, the thing that me, Jim, and Mark have talked about, and we talked about this last year, and it's just, it's the time. Because you have to put a French drain in along home playground, first base, third base, and then you have to drain the water underneath the road somewhere over the
Pretty over toward the parrot camp.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, that's not a small job, and again, is it really that big of a priority for one team that plays on the field when we have obligations to our taxpayers in this town? So, that's it.
What you could do temporarily is cut a trough like from where the main puddle is.
Yeah, the only worry there is if they go to play on it and somebody steps in it and twists it and it goes out.
Or someone walking their dog, and they step in it.
Right, but you always knew it was there. It was different when, because I helped work on the field when my kids played, too, George. I mean, I get it, but that's the frustrating part, they're not, they wanted that dirt on the field so they could push it around. They would have never been able to do it with all the rain.
Right.
You know, and our guys, they did it in a hurry because they were up on Jewel Way with the broken sewer, along with the flood. I mean, they were up there working in the rain fixing that sewer pipe, and we had raw sewage pouring down on the block.
I was just thinking of something like a rollout tarp or something like they do for PNC Park and stuff, like you just, you have it sitting to the side of the backstop or something. You know, that's
I mean, it's such a big area, I don't know that they deal with
Because the infield's the only real problem.
Correct. All his house, man.
That might be like a hundred by hundred area.
How do you pull that off? Squeak, squeak you up the tarp, I guess.
That's what we used to do.
That's all the time.
And I played with Zepley and Wallace, Rovio, I was on the men's team, and then I coached my side. So I know that field, and we had to work to make it
We tried the tarp one year.
Slipping, sliding. Slipping, sliding. Yep.
Anything else, Mike?
We could always just dig it out and put a public pole in.
Yeah.
You're saying? How do we there?
Police chief's report.
Lisa, do you have any advertisement for this basketball game?
I do.
Get it out there for you. Maybe send me the article so I can get it out there for you.
Yeah, I gave it to Tara last night, but I will also send it to you.
Yeah, for the police page. Also, so you know that drone ain't only being used for police. I just want to get that clear. This is gonna be for the entity of public safety, all public safety. The fire department could utilize it for missing persons, even though my dog beat him the other day in a contest. The dogs, it's a thousand six hundred. But anyways, it's gonna be for the fire department, too. We got the FAA registration card already. We got everything registered, everything licensed, rules, regulations, policy written, train's getting incorporated, hands-on training, Murray's book's coming out to teach it. All, I mean, everything's A to Z, put it that way. I just wanted to make sure you know that the fire department's using it, too. We're gonna have multiple operators between police and fire, because you never know when we're gonna use it and how we're gonna use it. It's a new toy, just like anything. We gotta get acquainted with it. We're carrying it up with the dog. We're doing the GPS follow me and track me, so that way we can utilize the, you know, the eyes in the skies and the nose underground, so that way it's better for the borough. That's all. I just wanted to make sure I got that out there, is for the public safety in itself, not just
All right, thank you. Adjournment?
I got one other thing to tell them. Can I ask something, Tom?
Sure.
I don't know what's going on with waste management,
but they cut all the weeds on Johnson Road again. Last time they cut it, a few years ago, they put an orange pipe down through the road on Pit Care's property. Now, not in there, it's right in the middle of the road. They was up there cutting it again, and the guy that was there, he was trying to tell us, we can't park where we park and all that, because they want to get something up Johnson Road. I told him, you're not getting anything big up Johnson Road. I told him, you're not getting anything big up Johnson Road, so you have that little area, this drive up Johnson Road, if that's what you're gonna do. I asked last time, I don't know what's going on, but, uh, I, I don't know if yous know what's going on or even if yous know that they're doing something again, but, you know, I think, I, like I told the guy that was cutting it, had people out there cutting, I said, you know, you are our neighbors and it'd be nice if you let us know. And I'm saying us as Pick Care, not me, you know? Even me, because I live right there. You know what I mean? Uh, that they wanna do this or they wanna do that. But, you know, I know last time they used Johnson Road, they destroyed a house and nobody says, nobody knew nothing about what was going on. You know, no, we didn't do that. No, we didn't do that. But, you know, I don't know what their game is right now.
We could try to get in contact with them and see what they're, what they're doing, but they don't, they don't ever, it's, it's the runaround with that.
Well, I understand that, but, you know, I just, you know.
Allegheny County is making them do it, that's why they're doing it.
Doing what?
They're cut, they have to cut back all the, uh, brush and stuff like that, so they're up there...
Why didn't he tell me that he's taking a vehicle up there?
They didn't take one last, their last week, last year, so, uh, Allegheny County, I complained to Allegheny County about it. I wanted to see what was going on and they, and they told me that they were making them do it or they were getting, he was getting a fine. So that's what was going on.
And the orange gas line coming out of the ground. And I'm saying gas line because it's the orange little...
Yeah.
Pipe that people use for gas line.
We could certainly reach out to them and see if there's something that they're doing project wise, but other than that, we don't get any information from them.
Sorry, I, I totally forgot about something. Like, I'm running the, uh, short camp this Sunday.
Okay.
And one of the reasons why we rented it was because of the sand volleyball. But I see, I've been there twice, uh, for parties and I see the signs by yellow jackets, but I haven't seen any yellow jackets. So would it be possible for me to get in there and rake the sand and if there's yellow jackets, I could take care of them so we could actually use it for our son's party this Sunday?
If, if you wanna, uh, let me have our guys go in there and check because it was at the beginning of the season that they saw the yellow jackets. They were having to cut the...
Cause that's, that's one of the reasons we picked, you know, the short camp over at Monroeville, cause they hadn't closed the sand volleyball. So that was the...
I'll have them, I'll have them check it and then, and then we'll let you know.
All right.
You, you have your phone number on the application.
Oh, yeah.
All right, thank you. Adjournment?
Motion adjourned.
Motion made, seconded. Any questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.